Next up is Climate Crisis Action Committee Presentation, Peter Martin. Back to the stage.
Hey, Peter, there you are. I'm gonna go ahead and promote you to panelist. Peter, you are in if you'd like to unmute. It looks like you are unmuted. Oh, there you are.
There's the camera. Okay, so thank you so much for allowing us to report today. It's a thrill to be back in council chambers, virtual as they may be. I would like to ask you if you could promote three other stars for this show. That would be Dean, Derek, and Linda in alphabetical order.
Okay.
There's Derek and there's Dean. And there's Linda. And then would you permit me to share my screen? Does that just work?
Yeah, you should be able to at the bottom. There should be a green button.
All right. Can you see my screen?
We can.
Okay, thank you so much. Just a voice check, Dean, Derek, and Linda.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep. Derek and Dean.
Hi folks, this is Derek here. Good to be here. Thank you so much.
And Dean. Okay, Dean, you got your hand up. Is your sound not working? Can you unmute?
Dean, you're in. Oh, you are muted now.
Meredith, can you unmute him?
Unmuted.
Okay, there you go. All right, we're all ready to sing in harmony. You guys didn't realize this. We were all gonna sing in harmony. Thank you very much for allowing the Langley Climate Crisis Action Committee to give you our report. This is, hang on one quick second. Sorry about that. I had the other computer with my wife lurking and gave feedback, so we didn't want to do that. The Langley Crisis Committee is now ready to give you a report on what we plan to do for... Whoops. I'll get this squared away. There we go. What we plan to do in 2022, we formed early in the middle of last year. And we've gone through the forming, norming, storming, and then performing cycle that I think all committees do. I chair the committee. And there'll be three other committee members speaking today, and you've met them already, but I'll give you more information on them in a minute. This is a picture of our roster, and if you look through your council packet, you saw the details of their individual biographies. There's 10 members. We have several subcommittees, or we call them teams. And we all have a broad and diverse experience in the area of climate. We're looking forward to contributing to the city in every way we possibly can. One of the first things we did was convene in a workshop to define a vision and mission that would guide our actions. And I'm not gonna read that to you. You can read it as we sit here, or you may have read it in the packet. It establishes pretty much how we interact with each other and how we hope to interact with you and the public. One of the things we've done right from the beginning was to take a very close look at the Langley Comprehensive Plan. And besides the sustainability element, many of the other elements specify goals to reduce greenhouse gases, mitigate practices that currently contribute to climate change, and adapt to the inevitable changes that we are gonna face. We're pleased that Langley has had an obvious awareness and concern for these matters over the years. If we execute on all these plans, it will be quite an accomplishment. Appendix one of our project report provided in your council packet contains specific references to the comp plan. And in the upper right corner of the slides, where it's appropriate, you'll find a notation about some of the comprehensive plan references that pertain. Climate action has three important dimensions. One, of course, is reduction in greenhouse gases. The second is mitigation of greenhouse gas effects. And the third is adaptation to the consequences from global warming that's already underway. And even when we pay attention to mitigation and adaptation, we want to never give up on reduction. And so you'll find us moving back towards reduction in the opportunities that we have in a town like ours to continue to reduce greenhouse gases. And what you heard from Todd Morrow is certainly a wonderful example. In order to improve our effectiveness and decrease ambiguity, we adopted a taxonomy. And our taxonomy basically says that everything we do will be under goals. There'll be strategies within those goals. And for your strategies, maybe for each strategy, we will propose certain actions. And the three goals that you're gonna hear about tonight are greenhouse gas reduction, involvement of the community and city focusing on mitigation and adaptation, and the third goal, enhancing the climate action communications in order to support the first two goals. We want to work with the staff and council to support what we like to think of as powerful action. And we hope for the next six months to demonstrate that and come back in September and give you a progress report of early success. We want to tell you right from the start that we're here to serve, eager to take input and guidance, and perhaps most eager to take assignments. So if you see things that are important for us to pay attention to that don't necessarily involve full-time activity by staff or council members, we're here to serve. Whoops. One of the things that we understand is that the city has resource limitations. We're prepared to find and cite comparable actions by other municipalities of comparable size and search for funding opportunities from outside sources, of which there are many these days. And we're eager to secure your sanction to work with other island county jurisdictions, organizations, and businesses. The people you'll hear from tonight are Dean Anell, who will talk about fossil fuels, Derek Oshiko, who will talk about community involvement and governance, and Linda Irvine, who will talk about communications, and I'll do the closing. And these are just the brief excerpts of their biographies. They are, they're much wider and deeper than we can possibly capture on that chart. The roster that you find has all of the details, and so it's my pleasure to introduce our first speaker, Dean Anell. And so Dean, with that, would you take it away?
Can you hear me okay?
Perfectly.
Oh, good. My name is Dean Anell, and I'm very happy to be a member of the Langley Climate Action Committee and present to you our 2022 work plan with respect to reducing greenhouse gases in and around Langley. I'm a retired engineer who's lived on the island for 32 years, raised my kids here. I've been active in various political and community endeavors like most of us and for most of those years. So as you can see from this slide, we're a society that uses a lot of energy. The one slide that got me into climate action type activities is that bottom one. You know, for 400,000 years, the level of CO2 parts per million in the atmosphere bounced around between 150 and 350. So that was good up until the dawn of the industrial age when it started climbing. We're now at 420. So that's what got me going in this. And so the way we want to combat that is solar power. So obviously, that has been photoshopped. That's the Langley Admin Building. I'm sure you're all familiar with that. So we'd like to get some solar arrays in town, and that's one likely spot that we'd put them. That would, we expect to spend, put about 100 panels up. Here's a couple other locations where we might put them. I think our budget would be around $100,000. I think we can get much of that funding from a couple different sources that I'll talk about here in a minute. And one of them is PSE. PSE's got a number of grant opportunities and the Washington State Department of Commerce, of which there's a member living in the Bayview area who's been quite encouraging, and they have very, very robust grants that they give out for this sort of thing. This here that you're looking at here is, this is the, the, the community farm on South Woodby, the previous one was. This, this is installed by the middle school. It's been there for about a year. Kari Peterson got it in there. The next one is the Green Bank Farm. Linda and I both worked on getting that installed up there. That was installed roughly 10 years ago. And it came about because 24 people put up about $10,000 each, went through all the hoops to get the government grants and from various agencies and got that thing installed. It operated for, for all these years. About a year and a half ago, we gave it to the farm. So it's now theirs and producing their energy. We also want to work with the Langley Building Department to try and get more heat pumps as a source of heat for residential. As you see a heat pump, the, the present cost of them is, is less than a mixed fuel, which is fossil fuel. They have considerably less, 2 tons versus 30 tons over 15 years compared to, to gas appliances. And so we'd like to, we'd like to see some, perhaps some building ordinances to encourage people in that direction. Another good opportunity that's quite obvious is you mount a heat pump on top of a hot water heater, and that heats your water, and they're what, seven times more energy efficient than gas and three times, three and a half times more efficient than water heaters. So a number of cities have taken this approach. Here's Bellingham, the little old Bellingham, showed up in the New York Times because they passed an ordinance requiring all new multifamily construction to, you could not use fossil fuels to heat your house. And in Washington here, four other cities have done that. We've got Thurston County, Olympia Shoreline, and Seattle have all taken steps to essentially outlaw the use of fossil fuel appliances in new construction. Would like to work with Langley to do something similar to that. Speaking of building codes, gray water's a good thing to attract, to attention to. We, I think if Langley adopted more use of gray water, they could reduce the effluent going to their sewer without any environmental consequences, and so that should have good environmental effects. And next is the transportation sector. Transportation's about 30% of the greenhouse gases that get emitted. We'd like to replace, as they wear out, the city vehicles with electric vehicles. We'd like to add more charging stations to encourage those of us that have those to use those. And I guess, following up on what Todd Morrow said recently is, you know, we kind of live on tourism here on the south end, particularly Langley, and it's kind of getting to the point where if you want to come to Woodby Island for the weekend, it's a little tough to get out of Muckletio and get on the island here because the, the line of cars can be, you know, two, three hours long. So wouldn't it be wonderful if we could establish something that would, something like you see in the picture here that would take people from wherever they're parked over in the Muckletio area onto the boat? They walk on the boat. They don't drive on the boat, and then they get to Clinton, and they get picked up and they get shuttled around the island. And perhaps Island Transit would have the buses to do that. So that's another thing we want to work on. It's gonna involve education and we're gonna work with DOT on that to some degree. Also, we have Had Island. They, they are served by a ferry that runs out of Everett, and they're quite anxious to include Langley in that stop. So go from Everett to Had Island to Langley and back the same way. It'd be a passenger-only boat. It'd look like that one on the left there. And that, that would be a wonderful step in the direction that, that we'd like people visiting Woodby to, to come here in a car-free manner. I think that would be very popular with many of the people that live in the mainland. As we know, you know, we can do whatever we can do here in Langley, but it's gonna be kind of a small dent in, in the fact that we'll have overall. And so we're interested in promoting legislation at a higher level, at the state and the federal level, to deal with greenhouse gases. An excellent example of that is HR 763, 763, which has been introduced. It's a carbon fee. And it's, it's gotten pretty close to being passed, but not quite. We'd like to endorse and get the city to endorse that. A lot of people don't know that the state just recently, last spring actually, passed a cap and trade bill, which puts a price on carbon. So the major emitters of carbon in this state will have to enter a marketplace where they have to pay for the amount of CO2 that they're putting into the atmosphere. So those are some of the things that we're going to do with this year. We like to get started on all those right away. And I, I think it'll be kind of a self-generating thing when people start seeing solar panels and charging things and, and bus systems and ways to get around without a car, and it becomes something we can all talk about. I think, I think we'll build a lot of momentum. So thank you very much for your time. And next, we're gonna have Derek is going to discuss another aspect that we'll be working on in 2022.
Thank you so much, Dean. I appreciate it. Thank you, members of the city council, staff of the city of Langley, and members of the public who are listening in for this opportunity to share the work of the Climate Crisis Action Committee. I'm so excited to be here after months of work to be able to kind of put their voice out there after many close, kind of working, typing things up and in a lot of meetings. So I wanted to share about the goal of mitigating the effects of climate change while adapting to climate change factors that are already in play. So our first strategy is to restore healthy, resilient ecosystems, starting with trees and forests. Our island's forests are a sink for a good amount of the carbon that we emit, and we need to protect existing mature trees and forests while replanting and planting new areas. Current incentives at all levels of government, from city to county to state, are biased toward cutting trees, and that needs to change. So our first action in this strategy is to develop or update an urban forest strategy to protect naturally occurring carbon sequestration of our existing tree canopy. And these are some images. The image on the left refers to how much carbon is stored in trees. And you see the areas in blue in Western Washington are a high priority area for protecting trees. And then there's another image of Langley showing the, you know, our ability to track the urban tree canopy, the extent of that, and how it changes over time. So we can protect the trees within the city of Langley and educate and encourage homeowners to cherish and protect their important and existing carbon sinks. And you'll notice in the upper right-hand corner, the various comprehensive plan references that already talk about trees and protecting them. So those can be looked up separately. Our second action is to establish a city gardener position for Langley. A recent report affirms that the Pacific Northwest is in a drought situation right now with areas of Washington State in extreme drought. So we must conserve and store water, slow and spread water throughout swales, protect our bluffs, and use water conservatively for trees, fruits, vegetables, and animals. Langley depends almost entirely on food from the mainland. We envision in the future more of our food being sourced locally to adapt to the potential supply chain disruptions and increase food costs that we've already seen. Moreover, food produced locally can reduce the carbon intensity of our food supply, while pre-consumer and post-consumer waste, food waste adds to greenhouse gas emissions if it's not composted. So the city gardener will put a permaculture lens on our town looking at how to maximize the wealth of sun, water, soil, yards, parks, and rooftops to conserve energy and water, build soil fertility and gardens, plant fruit and nut trees, support current and future generations to flourish. The city gardener will answer residents and business owners' questions, develop best practices, educate the community, and might develop recommendations or, and develop further recommendations for action. So we consider that maybe initially this is a volunteer activity from some, working with folks who have this expertise, and then it potentially could evolve into a paid position with, for example, grant funding. Maybe that person reports to Public Works or another department. But this is something that we do want to prioritize and work on. And you can see in the upper right-hand corner, some of the comprehensive plan references. And these are images courtesy of Kari Peterson from the Southwoodby Schools. So our second strategy in this goal is to promote zero waste to create and encourage circularity in the waste system rather than tossing consumer items and organic material in the trash. So while organic waste alone is a major contributor to greenhouse gas emissions due to the methane that's released when it decays, but we can also benefit by eliminating all forms of waste, which can also make a significant impact by reducing packaging waste, preventing the production of petrochemicals derived from fracked gas, and avoiding the embedded energy and products. As far as we could tell, unfortunately, there are not yet zero-waste actions in the comprehensive plan, but we can work together to have, have those added in, in the future. So our action, we would like to pass a zero-waste ordinance modeled after those passed in cities such as Bainbridge Island and in Bellingham. And there is already on Southwoodby a middle school class, and there's also a community group working on zero-waste issues. And we envision being able to collaborate with them as well. So that, that is our goal too, and I just really again appreciate your time. And I will introduce Linda, who will talk about communication. Thank you so much.
Hi, thanks, Derek. My name's Linda Irvine. I'm a Langley resident and a very eager member of the CCAC. It's great to be here with you all this evening. Our little communications team is inspired by this quote from Katherine Hayhoe, renowned climate scientist. And she says, "The most important thing we can do to fight climate change is to talk about it." So our communications team thought, that's it. We've got to start talking about this. Our first, we, we have some proposals that we would like the city council to approve for our communications team this year. And the first one is, we would like to initiate a community conversation and survey. This survey would discover stories of what people and businesses are already doing to cut their carbon footprints or adapt to climate change. It would also identify opportunities to do more, and it would gather input on where people and businesses expect the city to take the lead in fighting climate change. We plan to launch this survey in April. That's next month, Earth and Ocean Month, and we aim to have 1,000 responses by the end of the year, giving us a trove of information about local climate attitudes, actions, and opportunities right here. Our second action is we will identify and establish communication with trusted information channels, businesses, institutions, and community-based organizations so as to multiply the effectiveness of the Climate Crisis Action Committee and city actions. We will map out the institutions and the organizations that can both inform and guide our work as well as through which we can share messages. And our aim is simply to invite collaboration and information sharing with these trusted partners that people are already familiar with. Our third action is to issue a quarterly dispatch with local climate news generated with input from residents and businesses. We will also suggest curated content for the city of Langley's CCAC webpage. And our dispatch will provide material for our collaborator groups. For example, material for the mayor's newsletter, or a Public Works annual water quality mailing, or a Southwoodby record column, or some other channel identified through our community survey back in our first step. Our intention is not to create new channels or overwhelm people with information, but rather to support a conversation about climate using existing channels and places that we already have community conversations. Our fourth action is we propose to develop a brand identity for Langley as a community that acts on climate. We want to foster a sense of shared destiny and shared effort for the community so that any resident or visitor who arrives by that electric bus will understand that fighting climate change is simply how we roll. With input from our survey, we will develop a logo and a tagline to build recognition and belonging. Think Rising Together, or Village by the Rising Sea, or Fossil-Free Village by the Sea. You get the picture. We might host a contest to develop our logo, our climate action tagline and logo. And finally, reinforcing our brand as a community that acts on climate, we are considering the use of the Bright Action Project. It's an online interactive site that enables local teams of residents to compete with each other to reduce fossil fuel use, to conserve water and power, and reduce waste. The price tag of this online service is $5,000 per year, and we are asking that this be considered in the next budget revision. Outcomes from the Bright Action Project align with our CCAC and comp plan goals to reduce waste, reduce vehicle miles traveled, and transition from fossil fuels. So taken together, our hope is that these proposed actions will generate a robust conversation about climate change that inspires our individual and collective action commensurate to the scale of the challenge. Thanks for listening. And now back to Peter.
Unmute. Thank you very much to the triplets who are so talented and bring their, their energy and wisdom to this project. Our, our, the report conveys our ambition to get some early successes in 2022 and 2023. Build your confidence that together we can be an effective force, inspiring Langley toward a carbon-neutral future, perhaps ahead of state, national, and international targets. In 2023, you can expect us to advocate more ambitious initiatives such as incorporating the zoning and permitting rules that we talked about to harness solar power-enabled gray water for new construction, inspire Puget Sound Energy to incentivize renewable power more than they do, and urge Langley to pass resolutions that support the state and national innovations on renewable energy sources that Dean cited. and urge Langley to pass resolutions that support the state and national innovations on renewable energy sources that Dean cited. CCAC will work with the other committees. We have already got liaison relationships with PAB, P WAC, and DSR. And we hope to help develop code and permit refinements that incentivize or require new and existing climate friendly features. And never forgetting that this has to address the diversity, equity, and inclusion, a challenge that we all face. Active collaborations with other jurisdictions are critical. Island County Commissioners commissioned a new Island County Climate Action Plan, which they are now considering. It was prepared for them professionally and among other things, it recommends hiring a full time sustainability manager in the in the Island County Government. That position scope could include climate initiatives across the county and within its municipalities, businesses, and organizations. And we would want to be an ally and a link to them. We advocate that the Langley join the county to amplify impact and influence beyond the city limits of Langley, perhaps inspiring more action through the Island County Council of Governments, of which our mayor is a member. We believe Langley and other jurisdictions should participate, support, and help in countywide initiatives, and that might even include helping them fund it. So specifically, what's our ask? We ask that the Langley City Council concur with our 2022 CCAC work plan. We ask that even though our ambitions may cost money downstream in future years, that you agree with us that we can find ways to get grant money and external funding so that it's not an impact on Langley's budget. We ask that the mayor network with the Council of Governments and knowing his enthusiasm about climate action. That requires no inspiration at all from us. We allow, we ask specifically that you allow us to move ahead with the proposed survey and access to the mayor's and Public Works Communications Networks that were cited by Linda. We'd like to have you join us in celebrating April Earth and Ocean Month. And you can be sure that that'll be done all over the island and all over the nation. So we want to make a joyful noise now that we're maskless, at least temporarily. Let's go out and do something, a parade. We'd like to have you support Langley engagement with Bright Action. Linda mentioned that the price tag was $5,000 for a small city to participate. And that would cover the the cost of all citizens participating. What she what she didn't mention, and it's my joy to say it to you, is that you can get the same thing for $7,500 across a large municipality of the whole island. So five grand gets lets you influence 1,000 people and 7,500 lets you have similar influence across 86,000 people. We think that we'd like the mayor and working with us to perhaps bring to the Council of Governments the idea that municipalities can chip in and all participate in that $7,500 price tag. And it gives everybody a real opportunity to participate in something that's quasi competitive, but at the same time, it's very collaborative. And we would like to bring to you from time to time resolutions that support the climate action on a larger scale at the state level and specifically something that supports the citizens' climate lobby initiative to pass climate national legislation. And that's the extent of our presentation. We're open to questions. But I do want to leave you with one kind of spiritual or emotional comment. We're thinking about a famous pledge, "God grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change, courage to change the things I can, and the wisdom to know the difference." And when you apply that to climate, we say there are some things in climate we cannot change. But with courage, there's much we can do to reduce, mitigate, and adapt to the climate crisis. And we believe CCAC can help Langley with the task of marshaling resources and make that significant difference. Thanks very much for listening to us, and we're open to questions from council members. So I'll just stop sharing my screen.
Okay, thank you very much, all of you. It was really wonderful. And if people out there in TV land want to make a earmark donation to the city or a pledge for the Climate Change Acts and Committee's work, let us know. So any questions from council? We probably shouldn't go too long. We have a lot of stuff to cover, but take a few quick ones. Council members here.
Well, first of all, thank you, Linda, Derek, Dean, and Peter. What a great vision. I'm excited about it. And I actually think about the synergy between what everything that's been discussed here and island transit. Island Transit's got a fleet of buses. We're moving towards zero carbon. And you mentioned the Commerce Grants that are available. I just want to let everybody know that Island Transit made use of one of those grants for the solar installation at the Coogville Operating Base. They Commerce provided $133,000 for that solar. So I sent that information to Langley City staff and already a month or two ago. So it's just, it is, I think there can be a lot of, of, I guess, cross pollination, back and forth, we can all share. So thanks so much for being here tonight.
Okay, Councilmember Fleming.
Um, yes, I was quite inspired. Thank you guys a lot. And yeah, there's also some inter fertilization with parks and open space, but I'll get to that in a minute. But I'm aware that it is what would probably be a good idea if we at least approved your 2022 work plan tonight unless, you know, then maybe there needs to be discussion. I mean, there was a great long list of things you wanted us to approve, but that's the one that seems, you know, that rises to the top for me. But I'm not going to make a motion. Well, maybe I will.
So why don't we see if there's any more just general comments and then make a motion.
Okay. I think you can make a motion and then we'll have discussion and questions.
Well, yeah, okay, we could do it that way, too. Members here.
A point of order. Monica, is this a resolution that requires the five days posting?
I don't think it would be a resolution.
No, just accepting.
Or ordinance, you're just approving them to go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yeah, okay, I move that we approve CCAC's 2022 work plan. And then all the other things in there, I don't know what to do about them, but just keep it at that at the moment.
Second.
Okay, a second and any discussion.
Craig's here, second.
Councilmember Salerno.
Yes, of course, I'm I'm for all of this. It's so exciting to have you here and to share it with all the others. Because I get to get a glimpse of this as a liaison of this committee. The one thing I'd like to request is to move some things up. I saw that you do not have on your plan for the no fossil fuel. I'm not sure if this is right, but I heard 2023, I and your gray water encouraging rain water collection and that kind of thing. I would like to request that you probably, you saw, if you were here at the meeting earlier, that there will be no moratorium. So we're going to have one of the biggest developments that's ever happened to Langley happen. And what I would like to request from your committee is that you prioritize working on the ordinances that will be affecting new development in multifamily situations, which is the no fossil fuels to heat homes and the gray water, putting in gray water pumps with sewer systems when those happen. And if and I am really willing, I've been working with that group at the the AL E students on the Zero Waste Ordinance. I'm starting to develop a document that will actually show us how to go about doing an ordinance so that it takes off the burden of the staff. And I think we have the capability of getting it really close to ready to turn in to the planning director, Meredith Penny. And so I would like to ask if you could prioritize the building code.
Okay, so that's basically amendment. So let's see if there's any other, here, before you go, let's any other council comments?
Councilmember Boba seems to have her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. She's not on my screen. Oh, Marilyn.
Yeah, thanks. As someone who has spent most of their professional life in the nonprofit world, I see lots of, especially with environmental foundations in Seattle. I see lots of possibilities. You know, as you look for funding. And when I lived in Greece, although it's a very strange country, every house had a solar hot water heater on top of it. They found that that was the easiest way and cheapest way to heat their homes. And I think, you know. Thank you very much. That was very exciting.
Okay, okay, now, Mr. Martin.
Yeah, I, one of the things that we asked you to do is to give us assignments. And so I don't think we need to amend the motion. I just heard an assignment for us to go out and seek benchmarks and seek grant funding opportunities. And that's what we will do. I'll bring that up at the next CCAC meeting and consider us assigned. And I did neglect to thank councilperson Salerno for her great enthusiasm as serving as council liaison for us. And so I thank you very much for that. But I do want to take the opportunity to ask the mayor, is he going to continue to be our staff liaison? Or is he going to find us a staff member? Because that's the one place in our roster that we have a question mark.
Yeah, I'll work on that. I'll get back to you, so.
And we love having the mayor.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Greg had his hand up.
I just want to encourage the mayor to find someone other than you to be the staff liaison. I know how passionate you are about it, but you can't do all of it. You got so much on your plate.
We won't keep him in the dark.
Okay, that sounds good. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Getting opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And
One, one thing, we're, as far as funding goes, like, the we're going to need to know what the the funding implication or the budget implication is to this work plan.
Yes.
If, yeah, thank you.
We understand that before anything, any specific money gets spent, it has to come to council and that becomes an actual budget item. So we're keen keenly aware of that.
Yeah.